Testing, you can mute yours.
Recording in progress.
A couple of board members will be late. Testing, testing one, two. Oh, yeah, we should all, we should all go. Are we ready? Good afternoon and welcome to our work session. I'd like to call us to order. Board members that are present in the boardroom. We have Members Lessons, Member, Members Lessons, Holloman and Bellamy. And I will announce the other board members when they arrive. Going on to Item B. Our request for information. Most of our requests have been pretty much answered or responded to. Or they have been assigned. Those that are assigned include the following topics. Weighted grades. Student safety, sixth grade teacher and. Sixth grade teachers and move to middle school. Let's see, outsourcing of instruction, sports, the list of sports and activities. These items came up during the board retreat. Let's see, sports and activities. Community budget survey results and graduation data, graduation and dropout data. Is there any other request? Yes. Member Holloman.
I just wanted to make sure it's still in the mix, but I had asked about a comparison of the cost per covered employee in side by side in the various bargaining units. What we spend for health coverage in each of the different bargaining units. I think is the easiest way to say it. It is certainly not a trivial ask and it's going to take time and resources for someone to put that together. I wanted to make sure it was in.
In the queue. Yes, we'll make sure. I think I do, I do recall and I'm sure it's somewhere, but we'll, we'll make sure it's where it needs to be. And not just on my computer. So that was a comparison of healthcare costs by bargaining group. Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right. Thank you. So now we are moving on to our primary discussion. Oh, member Higgins has joined us. Welcome. We're moving on now to our discussion with ASD recruitment and retention efforts. Dr. Brian.
Thank you, Madam President. Today we'll receive an update on everything currently going on with retention and then we'll touch on the most recent report on guard rail number two. So I'll hand it off to our Chief Human Resources Officer and team.
Thank you. Welcome, guys. Can everybody introduce themselves? I think we know everybody, but I see a few new faces there.
Good afternoon, Madam President, members of the board. Yeah, absolutely. We will do introductions here in just a moment of the team. I'll just kind of run down the agenda and then I'll give the team an opportunity to introduce themselves. So today we're gonna just do kind of a high level snapshot of teacher turnover at both the national level, the state level and the local level here in the district. We're going to do an overview of the teacher recruitment and retention task force information from the state. We're actually going to do a high level or actually a deeper dive into ASD's current recruitment efforts. We had a second bullet on here where we are also going to talk about our current retention efforts. What we quickly found in a run of show yesterday is that we couldn't do justice to both of those topics in one presentation. And so we're gonna, we didn't want to give short shrift to either of those topics. So we're really going to do a deep dive on recruitment today and then hope that we'll have an opportunity to come back before the board sometime later this spring and really talk about recruitment. And then we're also going to highlight some of those things as Dr. Brian mentioned from guard rail two report that we think are going to germinate to this conversation. So just for the record, Marty Lang, Chief Human Resource Officer, before I have the team introduce themselves, I do want to note one person who is not here to introduce themselves that you might have expected to be here. And that is Peggy Rankin, our Senior Director for Talent Management. She sends her apologies and with permission asked me to share that she had a full shoulder replacement last Friday. It went well. She is in recovery, but she is disappointed that she can't be here to present on this topic because she's very proud of the work that her team is doing around this in these challenging times. But I told her I would make sure to do that. I think she's watching from home, so she'd probably get me in trouble if I didn't. So with that, I will let Amanda introduce herself.
Hi, good evening. My name is Amanda Graham and I'm the Assistant Director in the Talent Management Office.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lucy Tiefert. I'm the recruiter, also housed in Talent Management.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Don St. Powell. I am an Employee and Labor Relations Specialist in the Labor and Employee Relations Office.
Good evening. I'm Tony Riley. I am the Senior Director for Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Community Engagement.
All right, well, I've been in this role for a little over a year now. And as I kind of look through the data and read about the challenge of recruiting, there are a lot of, a lot of interesting statistics that have sort of bubbled up that I wanted to share with the board because I found them personally interesting. So I thought I'd start with a preview of kind of what's happening at the national level. So in 2021, 22, there were 3.2 million full-time teachers working in public schools in the United States. If you add private schools, that number goes to about four million. And interestingly, that's about 2.5% of the national workforce. So it's not a insignificant part of our national economy. The reason why I have statistics from 21, 22, that is the most recent year for which we have a complete set of national data. There's always a lag because it takes a little while at the end of the school year for districts to compile their information to report it to their State Department of Education, for the State Department of Education to aggregate all that information and feed it up to the federal government. And so that's the most recent year for which we have good statistics nationally. And so consistently I'm going to kind of anchor on that year and talk about that for both the national, state and local level. One thing that stands out in that year is that, you know, nearly 10% of public school teachers left their positions. And that was an increase of 4% compared to pre-pandemic levels. If you look at different types of districts, it's almost 14% for urban districts, 12% for high poverty districts and about 13% for districts with a large student population of color. 2% of those teachers, when they left their position, went to other districts or to other states. And so they stayed in the teaching ranks. But 8%, almost a quarter of a million teachers, left the teaching profession entirely. And that would just be a number that didn't have a lot of significance. But when you put it next to the number of new teachers that are coming into the system that are graduating from traditional teacher preparation programs, you can see that there's a large contrast there. There's a gap and that that gap has been growing significantly over time. The gap there is 95,000 teachers less than were leaving the profession for that year. Another statistic that really stands out to me when I look at that data is that mid-year turnover, so teachers leaving in the middle of the school year went from less than 4% on average most years to over 6% in 21, 22. And that is a statistic that's alarming because it's particularly disruptive to the school environment when students lose a teacher mid-year. And it's really challenging for principals to replace that teacher with a qualified, certificated teacher during that school year. They often have to wait till the following fall before they're able to replace somebody with a similar experience. If we look at the state level for that same year, there were 7,427 teachers in public schools in Alaska. Not surprisingly, Alaska has an even higher turnover rate for that year. 22% of teachers left their positions, which was nearly a quarter of the teaching population in Alaska. In some areas, that was even more extreme in some of our remote and rural areas. That topped 36%, so nearly a third of teachers left their position in some districts. Around 13%, so just under 1,000 of those teachers, we know left Alaska or the teaching profession entirely. And again, if you compare that locally to the number of teachers that the University of Alaskan system is producing, they only produced 153 initial licensure graduates that year. And so that gap between the teachers leaving Alaska or leaving the profession in Alaska and the number of new teachers that are being produced locally is pretty stark. And so in Alaska in general is just a reality that we have to source a lot of our qualified teachers from outside of Alaska. So looking at the local level in the Anchorage School District in 21, 22, there were 3,081 teachers. About two thirds of all the teachers in the state are in the big five school districts. 41.5% of all those teachers in Alaska are here in ASD. And you'll see I highlighted the year for 21, 22. We had 416 resignations that year, about 13 and a half percent of our total FTE in the district. And again, that's, you know, kind of comparing that to the number of graduates from the UA system. You can see that even if all of those graduates from the UA system opted after they graduated to apply for a teaching position that year, and if all of them applied to the Anchorage School District, we would still be dramatically short teacher resources. And so we also have to recruit heavily from outside of Alaska because it's easier to access our data. We also give you kind of a five-year preview so you can see the trend line in terms of resignations, the percent of total FTE that that represents per year and the number of those initial licensure grads across that same time band. So knowing we're having, we're seeing an increasing number of teachers turning over and it's more challenging to recruit those folks from the lower 48. Not surprisingly, over the last five years, we've seen an increase in the number of teacher vacancies that we see at the beginning of the year, right? Our goal is always to have a qualified, certificated teacher in every classroom on day one. That's never been the reality, but we try to keep that number as small as possible. And over the last five years, that's gotten increasingly more challenging. You think we have 94 schools in the Anchorage School District. We went from five years ago having less than one teacher vacancy at the beginning of the year in each school to now over one and a half per school. So, right, that's an alarming trend. I know a lot of you are kind of interested in the general demographics of our teacher ranks generally. So I thought I'd share a couple of details that I found interesting. Of the roughly 3,000 teachers that we have in the district, about 800 or about a third, well, less than a third, are still tier one, tier two teachers. And what that means is they were hired before 2006. Were at experience somewhere in the state prior to 2006 and they are in the defined benefit retirement program. So at 25 years of experience, they have the opportunity to retire with a pension and medical benefits. Everybody hired after June 30th of 2006 is a tier two or tier three employee and has that defined contribution benefits package. We average plus or minus about 100 retirees over the last couple of years. So we're seeing more and more of those tier one and tier two teachers as they become eligible leaving the system. And in 19, in FY 98 and FY 99, so over a two-year period, there was an early retirement incentive that a lot of experienced teachers in ASD took advantage of and retired at that time. And so in that two-year band, ASD hired over 1,200 teachers. And that bubble, that's about three or four times the average number of teachers that we were hiring per year during that era. That bubble's been traveling through the system. And as of June 30th of this year, that entire group that's still in ASD and there's little, right around 200 of them are retirement eligible. So we're likely to see an uptick potentially in the number of teachers who are going to retire. If we look at the other end of the spectrum and we look at new hires to the district, our five-year turnover rate is averaging about 50%. So when we hire someone, we know five years from now, only about half of those teachers will still be here. That's a pretty steady statistic and it, it has been a longstanding statistic in the profession nationally. So we trend pretty closely with that national average. And then one more data point that I thought was kind of interesting is the estimated cost to replace a teacher in ASD is just over $28,000. So it's not insignificant as those numbers are going up, the cost for us to replace those teachers. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Amanda and she's going to talk a little bit about what transpired in 2020 at the state level in terms of trying to figure out how as a state we address this challenging issue.
Yeah, so the TRR task force, that's the Teacher Retention and Recruitment Task Force, which is a working group. And this working group was created by Governor Dunleavy in 2020. The purpose of the working group was to address the root causes of Alaska's teacher retention and recruitment issues. This working group was made up of about 50 plus people. And it was its members, advisors, regional legislative observers, rural, urban schools. Sorry, the slides went away.
We have, we have a handout.
Well, no, I've got this, thank you. Also, teachers and administrators, school board members, early career, long-term experience, pre-K, K-12. So it was really made up of a good wide range variety of folks who represent Alaska in its entirety. So. So the, the working group's project was split up into three phases. So the first phase of the project was to identify the root causes of Alaska's teacher retention and recruitment issues and to propose the solutions. So with that, they sent out a survey and about 4,000 plus educators responded to that survey with their input. And so they took that input to kind of build their action plan. So phase two of this process was to publish the action plan and the survey results. So all of that information is available. So there's links in the slide deck if you're interested in reading more about it. That information is there for you. And then the phase three of this project is the implementation phase. And that's currently the phase that they're in. So out of this, they created what they call the TRR playbook. And this is the Department of Education. And that provides districts with a resource for attracting and retaining quality teachers in Alaska. And so that link is also in here and that's a really good resource for districts to use in order to set up their, their plans.
All right, I'm going to talk a little bit more about the survey results. The slide didn't change from my computer here up there. Oh, there we go. Just a little bit of lag. So when they surveyed folks in 2020, of course, you know, this all has a pandemic flavor to it. That survey went out to over 15,000 individuals in the state who all had an active teaching certificate in Alaska. They did get a pretty good response rate over almost 4,200 individuals. At least started and most completed the survey. When they took that survey, they were asked to think about from a list of 40 different items, which items were personally most important to them? And then there was also a list of 34 solutions that were proposed to them and they had to rank order which of those solutions they thought would have the greatest influence on this, on these topics. And so what you can see here is a table that is kind of a high level review of what came out of those survey results. But before I talk about that, they also did a qualify or a qualitative supplemental survey that looked at all of the written comments from those who completed the survey. They also conducted some interviews with folks who had left the profession in Alaska or who had moved out of state to get some data from them. And they also interviewed recruiters from districts around the state. And so this is all of that data rolled up into kind of a meaningful table. So if you look at that first column, they divided all of that into kind of three topical buckets. Those that fell into the financial bucket, those that fell into the working conditions bucket and the information that fell into the kind of support and professionalism category. Then that middle column, the second column you'll see is the top 10 items in terms of rank order from the survey results and what people identified as the information that was personally most important to them. So number one, you can see there in parentheses was salary. Number two was positive workplace conditions. Number three was personal connections with students. Retirement benefits was number four. You can kind of see one through 10, what those top 10 were. Over on the third column on the right, you'll see from those 34 solution influences that they asked people to rank the top 15 results. And so number one was competitive salary, number two enhanced salary schedule. Number three was defined benefit retirement system. What was interesting to me is you actually have to get all the way down to number 10 before we get out of the financial bucket. So people identified salary as their number one most, you know, personal item and positive working conditions as number two. But when asked about solutions, the top nine solutions all fell in that financial bucket. From the qualitative supplemental survey, there were five themes that emerged and you can see those are bracketed and at the end of those lists in the third column. For those of you who really like surveys and data, I'm looking at you member lessons. We did link down here that the bottom, the full survey results. And you can see the full list of 40, the full list of 34. And then they also disaggregated that in a number of really interesting ways by demographics, by gender, by urban and rural school district, by tier within the retirement system. So if you really want to kind of dig into those survey results like the task force did, all that information is linked there at the bottom. So now moving to the TRR playbook that was made available to districts, they really identified from all of that information, six critical or essential areas that you need to focus on in the state of Alaska. Number one is streamline, streamlining the certification process with the Department of Education here. Enhancing recruitment efforts, creating paraprofessional pathways, strengthening working conditions, which is really that retention piece of this, developing leadership pathways and restructuring retirement options. So I'm going to turn it over now to Lucy, our recruiter, and she's really going to focus on those top three areas. And then, like I said at the onset, hopefully we'll have an opportunity to come back this spring and report out on number four and five there.
All right. Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us. I'm looking forward to covering these first three, six essential areas of the TRR playbook. So the first area that I'm going to cover is Area One, Streamlining Certification and Recertification. So as we know, the decisions about certification and recertification processes and requirements are left up to the state and the Department of Education and Early Development. So I wanted to highlight a couple of things that they've been updating recently in order to make this a more streamlined process for our new teachers that, as Marty mentioned, many of them coming from out of state. So they do continue to open up alternative certification pathways, especially for special education and special services certifications for candidates that are currently enrolled in their preparation programs. ASD is currently working within the framework of the emergency certificate, the program enrollment certificate and the special education alternate certificate. I'll be going over those in more detail in my section of the presentation. But we are working within those pathways. And then it's also worth mentioning that Deeds also in the final stages of developing a new online platform for certification applications. And this is just a step in the right direction. It's going to expedite their process and make it easier for prospective teachers and special services providers to become certified in Alaska. Both those that are graduating within the UA system and then also those that are coming from out of state. Right now, new teachers have to get a packet, a paper packet notarized and mail it into the state for processing. So that really just needs to be updated. I keep wanting to change on my laptop. Okay. And then I'm also going to be going into a bit more detail, as I said, in the emergency and program enrollment certification pathways that ASD is using. So there's, you know, this was introduced with obviously the whole state of Alaska in mind as well as the big five districts. And so ASD specifically, we really don't want this to be a stopgap measure for filling our current teacher vacancies. We don't want it to be a temporary solution. So we're really looking at the emergencies straight into a program enrollment pathway so that those teachers can then pursue their initial professional and master's teaching certificates and hopefully become long-term employees of ASD. So the emergency certificate requires a bachelor's degree and an ASD job offer. So before anyone can even apply for an emergency certificate, they have to have a offer for a full-time AEA teaching position with ASD. So we most commonly see this utilized for those that have been long-term subs in the building or maybe they have a background in education outside of the public school system and haven't had a certificate before, but have experienced teaching. And so we do have our principals buy-in when we're helping these folks apply for emergency certificates. And then that certificate is only valid for one school year and it cannot. And then that certificate is only valid for one school year and it cannot be renewed. And so during their emergency certificate year, these teachers need to enroll in a teacher preparation program. This is most commonly going to be a master's in teaching or an M A T. And they also need to pass their basic competency and content area exams. Basic competency refers to a reading, writing, and math set of exams. And then in their content area can be elementary or a specific secondary subject or special education. Content area exams are traditionally taken at the end of a teacher preparation program. But we, this is a requirement at the beginning as their first enrolling because we do expect that these teachers know their content, even though we understand that they have more to learn when it comes to the art of teaching. They are already in the classroom under this alternative pathway, and so they need to have that content area completed before they finish out their program. And then there's just some numbers for your reference there. We currently employ fifty-four teachers under the emergency certificate and thirty under the program enrollment certificate. And then the next area of the T R R playbook that I'm going to be covering is the enhancing recruitment efforts area. So this is a really broad area, as you can imagine. So this will be the biggest chunk of my presentation here. And these are the topics that I'll be covering specifically. So I'll go over briefly the hiring incentives that we're currently offering for teachers and other staff members, our online recruitment platforms and the local job fairs that we consistently attend and encourage. Marketing campaigns are grow your own programs. The Bridge USA program that brings teachers to the U.S. under a J one visa. And then I'll also just briefly mention a, an event that we hosted with Catholic Social Services and their Refugee and Immigrant Services team. So like I said, I just want to briefly go over the hiring incentives that we're currently offering for teachers, related services providers, and other staff members. So we're currently offering hiring bonuses for student nutrition and totem employees. Student nutrition employees can earn up to an a thousand dollar bonus. And all totem employees can earn up to a two thousand dollar bonus. Sped paraprofessionals specifically can earn a two percent increase on their hourly wage once they meet the requirements that have been sent down by the state for a highly qualified paraprofessional. And there's also opportunity to earn differential pay of two dollars per hour and four dollars per hour, respectively, for special programs and behavior support paraprofessionals in special education. We also offer a referral bonus. So any current regular ASD employee that recommends an applicant who is hired as a bus driver or attendant, a sped paraprofessional educator, or a cafeteria manager, assistant manager, lead or assistant will qualify for this referral bonus as long as they are named on the application. And then we have also introduced some increases to pay for our substitute teachers. We recognize that this is also a big need for the district, both with our current teacher vacancies and just always we need a really good pool of subs for our teachers to rely on. So we have increased the daily subpay to a hundred and seventy-five dollars per day. That hadn't been increased in a long time prior to this year, so that was really good to see that change. We also added a new tier for daily subs, and this is reserved for those who already have a teaching certificate but are obviously not currently teaching full-time. This is really to attract more retired teachers into the subpool. These are really the best subs that we can hope for. They fend teachers with us or with another district. And so we do offer them a higher rate of pay at two hundred and twenty-five per day as long as they maintain their retired slash lifetime teaching certificate that's offered by the state. And then we also do offer a twenty-five dollar differential for subs at Title One schools. This is offered on a day-by-day basis. So if a sub is at a Title One school one day and not another day, they'll, their compensation will reflect that, and we just see a greater need for subs at those schools. And then we're also offering signing bonuses and relocation assistance for special education teachers and related services providers. They can receive either a five thousand dollar signing bonus for two years of service or they can elect ten thousand dollars in relocation assistance for four years of service. And then this is actually a relatively new offering. We're offering for speech, language, pathology assistants and educational interpreters a very similar set of hiring incentives. So a twenty-five hundred dollar bonus again for two years of service and then that same ten thousand in exchange for four years of service if they're relocating from outside of Alaska or outside of Anchorage. And then we're also offering pay differentials within the special education jobs. So special education teachers that are in self-contained classrooms and all of our related services providers. Once they get their estimated salary from talent management with their contract, they'll receive an automatic six percent increase on that salary under that job title. And then all of our other special education teachers, so primarily those in resource classrooms, will receive a three percent increase on their annual salary. And now I'm going to move into our online recruitment platforms that we're currently using. So you can see this list here. These are the primary platforms that we use. LinkedIn, Handshake, and Indeed should be somewhat familiar. Alaska Jobs is hosted through the Department of Labor. Alaska Teachers and Personnel is a really wonderful resource for teachers that are kind of just starting to think about moving to Alaska. They can submit an application there and that candidate bank is open to us. Alaska Native Hire is a really wonderful site hosted through Cook and the Tribal Council. They have a lot of users for that site and it's free for us to post our jobs. So it's great to have that visibility as well. And then our jobs are also automatically posted through Education Week. So just to give you an idea of what it really looks like to use a online recruitment platform day-to-day. I'm highlighting here Handshake. This is a relatively new platform that we're using. And you can think of it as sort of a LinkedIn for college and university students and alumni specifically. So there's a lot of functionality built into this platform. Importantly, there's really great opportunities for employer branding. So just like most other platforms, we do have our company profile page. But the advisors that we're able to meet with from Handshake encourage us to send out messaging campaigns in the kind of off-season between hiring and staffing seasons to just encourage students to go ahead and like our page or follow our events that we're hosting through Handshake. And that way, we're just hoping to build up our brand with these college and university students and alumni and continue to build our school network as well. So we've identified those schools and universities that either have a strong education pipeline or those like in the Pacific Northwest, for example, with students that are more likely to relocate to Alaska or who maybe are from Alaska originally. And so we can reach out to representatives from, from those schools and make those connections to co-host events or just, you know, kind of plant that seed so that they are aware that we're actively hiring and recruiting and looking for students from their schools. There's also a job posting page, and like I mentioned, we can use messaging campaigns for employer branding to encourage students to apply for our jobs and also to invite them to our events, which can be office hours, information sessions, job fairs. And these messaging campaigns can be filtered to students in specific majors at specific schools. There's even an option to target students who have marked that they may be interested in living in Alaska one day. And Handshake is also a really powerful tool for diversity recruiting, which is a really important part of our board goals and guardrails because you can filter candidates based on their, the type of institution that they attend. So HBCUs and Hispanic-serving institutions, women's colleges, as well as AAPI-serving institutions. We can filter based on all of those institution types and really focus on our diversity hiring efforts. And you can see in that screenshot there, that's just a highlight of an event that we hosted recently about living and working in Anchorage, Alaska. You can see that we were able to connect with a what is it, twenty-nine thousand students from different schools with that invitation. We had thirty who were registered and attended the event, but that's just part of the employer branding effort that we're making through Handshake. And then this is just a list really for your review of some of the local job fairs that we're attending regularly, either year-to-year or quarter-to-quarter, depending on how often they're hosted. The Alaska's People Career Development Center is hosted through Cook and the Tribal Council. And the rest of these should be fairly familiar. But these are really wonderful workforce development organizations throughout Anchorage that are always hosting job fairs and have that personal connection with job seekers. That can be hard to make, especially right now. And so we feel really lucky to be invited to these events, and I just wanted to highlight those. And then, just wait for the slide switch.
Let, let the record show that member Jacobs joined, has joined us as well. You can continue, Lucy.
Awesome, perfect. So, okay, looks like the slide updated. So I also wanted to touch on our marketing campaigns. So we recently had a campaign with a company called Odyssey, and we won't be able to play it today. That's why we heard that reverb earlier through the mic, but the audio example is linked there if you'd like to listen to it. But this is just a commercial that we had through Odyssey that was deployed to teachers in different cities across the U.S. And so we're actually launching a very similar campaign, but with GCI this year. And that's just really in favor of working with a local organization. And this is our teacher recruitment and community outreach campaign. It utilizes Facebook, Instagram, and social mirror advertisements, cable TV, and digital mobile conquesting. All of these terms really just refer to fancy ways that GCI uses our phones to track us, track our interests. It's a little bit spooky to learn about, honestly, but it really helps us to target current teachers both in Anchorage and Alaska and then also in cities throughout the U.S. of similar size, that have similar-sized school districts and that also have direct flights in and out of Anchorage. That was one of the kind of criteria that GCI really suggested using, at least for our initial campaign, because if someone just sees our, our ad pop up on their Facebook, you know, that's the first thing they're going to be thinking about. How easy is it for me to travel back and forth to see family? And so we're hoping that that'll, you know, at least encourage them to, to get a little bit farther into our site and learning about our district. And we are targeting them again through like behavioral and keyword targeting. And then we're also going to be creating local awareness and continuing to encourage community involvement, and that's mostly through cable TV ads and a little bit more of that mobile conquesting. And then I just wanted to briefly go over the highlights of our Bridge USA program. And again, that's that program that brings teachers to the U.S. and to Anchorage under J one visas. So the J one visa is a three-year exchange, base exchange, and they do have an opportunity to extend for either one or two additional years. We hired thirty-four teachers under this program this year for a total of forty-nine Bridge USA teachers currently in the Anchorage School District. And a little piece of exciting news that recently came down. We have thirteen of our fourteen Bridge USA teachers who are in their third year and eligible for that program extension have elected to extend with ASD for an additional two years. So we're seeing already, and this is our first round of teachers that's up for that extension. So we're already seeing a really great return and hoping that most of these teachers in this program will be with us for five full years. And then they do have the opportunity to repeat the program once they return home to their home country for two years. And that's really just to fulfill that cultural exchange purpose of this Bridge USA program. And these are highly skilled teachers who are licensed in their home country, and they have at least two years of teaching experience when they arrive in Anchorage or other places in the U.S. And then to finish out, or actually, that's not true. I have a couple more slides, but getting close to the end here. I wanted to highlight our Catholic Social Services event that we had in October. This was with the Refugee Assistance and Immigration Services at the CSS Welcome Center. We had representatives from ASD Talent Management, Student Nutrition, which are pictured there, Transportation and Operations, and we met with job seekers. And we were able to conduct onsite interviews. So that's what you see happening there in the picture. And we were able to hire just that day, actually, three paraprofessional educators, one custodian, and five classroom support substitutes. So that was a really wonderful event. It was really great to see teams from across the district come together to make that happen, and we're hoping to continue that partnership. And then I am moving into a new area, so I'm going to be talking a little bit about how we're creating paraprofessional pathways within the district. And we're doing this through grow your own programs primarily. So there's a list here, and I'll just let that slide catch up with us. So everyone can see. Okay, okay, perfect. So we are currently using all of these grow your own programs. The Building Special Educators Program is an opportunity for current totem and ACE employees in any position who are interested in becoming special education teachers. We will actually offer them one hundred percent tuition reimbursement while they earn their degree in special education, as long as they remain employed as totem or ACE employees. We also have our General Education to Special Education Program or GETS. And as the name suggests, this is for general education teachers who would like to transition over to special education. Any additional training or education that they need to do that, we, we will offer them eighty percent reimbursement on those classes. And then we also work in the framework of the Special Education Alternate Certificate Program. And so I mentioned this way at the beginning when I was talking about some of the changes that DEED has recently made. And this is a big one. This allows anyone with a bachelor's degree and nine credits in special education to actually become a licensed special education teacher. And this is different than the emergency certificate because they do have those sped courses. They can sign I E P paperwork. They can make decisions on, for their students. And of course, we have mentors for them and department support, but that's really important for them to be able to feel at home in their classroom and fulfill the job responsibilities. We also have really strong student-teacher and counselor programs within the district, and those continue to have a large number of applicants. We also are currently have and are looking into building up our Speech Language Pathology Pathway, which is a speech paraprofessional to a speech language pathology assistant to a speech language pathologist, all the acronyms there. And so we have some proposed funding for a similar like tuition reimbursement option. But currently, it's just really great that we do directly hire for all of those positions, and we have the, the mentors and the supervision available for anyone that would like to progress through that pathway. Similarly, we have supervision and exam fee funding available for behavior strategists who would like to become registered behavior technicians and then behavior analysts. We have a really great internship program with our school psychologists, and they do offer supervision for clinical fellows. So if we have clinical fellows who would like to come to our district to get their supervision hours, we can offer that and hopefully retain them to become school psychologists with ASD. And then lastly, we do just hope to see grow your own programs coming out of the academies of Anchorage, and there's a lot of potential there. And that's it for me. I'll turn it over to Marty now. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. So as we mentioned at the onset, you know, tho- those are the areas we really wanted to do a deeper dive on today. And then these last three areas, two of really which are in our local control, will hopefully come back and presented on a later time. And then the sixth one, their restructuring retirement options really is in the hands of the legislature in terms of any changes at that level. As I kind of painted the picture upfront, right, the challenge right now is real. It is difficult to find qualified folks to fill all the positions that we have in the district. But, and, and we know that there are no silver bullet solutions, you know, single solutions that are going to solve all of our, our teacher vacancy issues right now, but hopefully what you heard is that we are really leveraging a menu of options here in order to try, to try to meet that current challenge. Anytime we talk about staffing, I think it is important to keep in the forefront of the conversation the guardrail set by the school board that the superintendent will not operate without a plan to develop a diverse and culturally responsive workforce. I know the board worked on this on Saturday, and there's some updates now to the language, so we, we look forward to reporting out on those changes next year. But in December, the board did acknowledge a report on guardrail two, and I wanted to give Dante and Tony an opportunity to highlight some of the work that we're doing to make sure that even in these challenging times, we are also tending to making sure that we are responsible to this. We are also tending to making sure that we, um, are responsible to this guardrail as well. So with that, I will turn it over to Dante.
Thank you very much Marty. So yes, uh, so of course with any plan, this is very important to have a measure of where you are. And, and of course where you are going through, uh, trends, uh, analysis and trends. The way we do that, uh, for the ethnicity, the, the, the ethnicity of our staff is through the. Elementary Secondary Staff Information Report, and some of you may be familiar with, familiar with this report. Um, this is a report, uh, that is, uh, required by the EEOC. The, or otherwise known as the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission is also, uh, referred to as the EEO5 Report. And this is the report that is required for, uh, educational institutions to submit to the EEOC. Every other year, um, and, and uneven years. Um, being that this is not an even year, our, our twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four was not an even year. Um, we did not, uh, report, um, but we still collect this data just to make sure we have consistency in, in any reports that we, um, do gather. From, uh, similar information, um, that we report to the EEOC. So. The, the report ultimately, uh, records, uh, and tracks, um, the gender and ethnicity of our, of our staff here at ASD. So here I have on these next few slides, just a few, uh, um, trends that highlight the, uh, the percentage of ethnicity amongst our employees. Here, this, in, in this table here, we have, uh, this, uh, that lays out, uh, the trends in our permanent staff. So this, uh, being that this is permanent staff, this would just not include our subs or any temporary employees that we, that we do hire here, the district. Um, and you can see here that there is an increase in the percentage of ethnic employees with our permanent staff. The increase is going to be at a point of point three percent increase. And this is going to be over the course of the last, uh, four years. For our school-based principals, our APA, um, staff. Um, you notice here there is a decrease in the percentage of ethnic employees. This decrease is going to be of a 1.3% decrease. And, uh, u- unique of, um, among the, this group of, of, of employees is that they're, they're a pretty small group of, of employees. So any, any changes in, um, in this, in, 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 in the staffing of this group is going to dramatically, uh, impact the final results. You can see here, um, we have for twenty twenty-four, there's a hundred and fourteen employees. So if we lose one person, you know, two people, that's going to be of a hopeless, uh, hope, um, uh, percent change in, in the number of, uh, of ethnic employees that we do have with the district. Our, um, principals and, uh, assistant principals that we do have with the district. And then for our teaching staff, uh, we do have a, uh, a slight increase again of point two, um, uh, of the percentage of ethnic employees that we have for our teaching staff. Again, th- these numbers, uh, may seem small in, in their, in their changes, but, uh, uh, we are, we are, for the most part, we are a pretty large district and, um. Over the course of, you know, going back further, you can see certainly direct, direct, drag changes in the number of ethnic employees that we have with the district here. So with that, uh, the ultimate driver, um, for our current staff is going to be our, uh, the staff that we do. Interview and those who do apply for, for the district and, uh, I'll pass off to Amanda to speak a little bit more about that.
Yeah, so the interim guardrail two point one. The goal of that is the percentage of underrepresented applicants for regular positions will increase from forty-two percent in the fall of twenty twenty to forty-eight percent in the fall of twenty twenty-five. So that two point one guardrail recognizes that ASD cannot develop a diverse workforce without first attracting a diverse pool of qualified applicants. So to touch on our applicant data. Oh, thank you. Um, currently we, we're happy to report that ASD is currently exceeding that interim guardrail two point one target. Which the percentage target was forty-eight percent by the fall of twenty twenty-five. And for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four percentage of applicants, those who self-identify in one of those six underrepresented ethnic groups increased five point three percent. So we increased from forty-three point seven percent to forty-nine percent. So again, just to mention that we have exceeded that goal of forty-eight percent. So that's really exciting. Also, those who self-identify as white has decreased from four percent. So we've gone from fifty-one point seven percent to forty-seven point seven percent. And also those who have opted not to identify their ethnicity has also decreased by one point two percent. So we've gone from four point six to three point four. And we do believe that this is in part due to the fact that we changed some language in our application. We revised it to explain why we're collecting the information. So in that, um, we do think that people have decided to identify their ethnicity because we've explained the why.
Let, let the record show that member Dudley has joined us as well.
Okay, so for interim guardrail two point two, the percentage of ASD school-based staff that will receive culturally responsive training. The district is working on a number of efforts to support this target for all of our school-based staff. But we did go ahead and reset this this year from the percentage of thirty-one percent that was previously reported to you. And the reason why we did this is because we want to make sure that we're accurately and consistently tracking this measure. And we realized that we had and needed to do some updates and changes. And those are some of the things that I'm going to talk to you about in terms of what we are working on. So one of the main things, the slide is going to catch up, but is that we have relaunched the District Equity Work Group. And. The point of this work group is really to create a culturally responsive, uh, framework rubric. Based on the state's cultural standards that for educators to align and identify. Our current professional development opportunities that we already offer within the district. And then to figure out were there any holes or gaps that might be needed for us to fill in. To align with our future professional development training, um, opportunities. We also want to make sure that we offer these flexibly, both in-person, online synchronously and asynchronously. To provide that flexibility for our educators. There are joint and coordinating efforts with elementary, middle and secondary leadership. To develop an employee leadership development pipeline, but we want to make sure first that we are explicitly determining what our principal expectations are. And building a program that aligns with those, um, after those have been defined. As you heard, we continue to, uh, develop our Grow Your Own pathways and create additional opportunities for our paraprofessionals to also. Become certified teachers. In collaboration with HR and, uh, Special Education Department, we have expanded our partnership with Hanover Research. Who previously provided some recommendations specifically to look at some of our Grow Your Own, um, programs and our Equity Capstone Report from twenty twenty-one. So what we're really using is national and Alaska-specific data to create and develop a roadmap for more. Um, and expanded global recruitment opportunities and retention strategies based on some of the challenges that we continue to identify within the state. And lastly, uh, the district has joined, um, the school districts in Chicago and Philadelphia. As part of the second cohort of Urban Scholars Equity Accelerator Program. The goal of this is really to learn from colleagues, um, around the U.S. and see what they're doing. We know that this isn't just happening in Alaska. This is something that we're all facing. But really to understand in a local context and how equity is embedded. And to analyze patterns of how our teachers and leaders are recruited, staffed and retained. This is also going to give us access to those districts that were in, uh, the first cohort and those were Atlanta, Palm Beach and Memphis. So we look forward to working with them and seeing what we might be able to learn and some practices that we might be able to implement as well.
All right, we have one more slide, but I'm going to skip past that and go to the question slide. Because I recognize that we are bumping up against our five o'clock deadline and I, uh, we've thrown a lot of information at you over the last forty-five minutes or so. So I just, uh, will end it there and, uh, pass it back to you, Madam President, if there are any questions.
Thank you. Thank you all for a great report. Uh, I'd like to, uh, extend our time about fifteen minutes, so we have a little bit more time to discuss. Any opposition? Thank you. Um, member Holloman?
Um, I had a couple of questions, uh, I don't think were in the presentation. Uh, but one is of the applicants that apply to the district that meet the technical qualifications, they have a certificate, et cetera, et cetera. Do we know what percent of those are offered a job? And, and it's a number I, I think kind of indicates. The depth of the pool that we're pulling from. Um, it used to be a pretty small percentage, I remember a long time ago. I don't know if you track it, um, but it would be of interest. If you did.
So I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I am certain that that is something that we could. Hold for you.
The other one I was curious about is if we track teachers lost to other districts in state. Or teachers that come to us from other districts in state. I know there's a bill that would eliminate the cap on the number of years of experience that could be offered to new hires. And, and I also know last Christmas when I was traveling and hanging out in Anchorage Airport. There were ads in the airport that were obviously targeted at Alaska teachers, encouraging them to come to a specific district in the state. It wasn't Anchorage. But I, I had never seen that kind of. Targeted advertising before. It clearly was an intent to pull teachers from other in-state districts. Eat ourselves basically from the, the inside. I was just wondering if that's an issue for us? Or a resource for us?
Well, Lucy talked a little bit about the mobile conquesting and, and some of the marketing and campaigning that we're doing. And, you know, likely other districts are, are engaging in those same practices. There is a, a limited pool of educators out there and it's shrinking, and so it is very competitive on that front. I wrote down both your questions, member Holloman, and I have not seen either of those specific, um, pieces of data. But we'll go and see what we can find and, and, um, certainly share that through Board Connect.
Thank you. Other questions? Uh, member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Um, appreciate the presentation and really, um. Proud of the, the work that we're doing, especially regarding the guardrails. So thank you everyone. Wanted to ask and drill in a bit on the cost to replace an educator in ASD, the twenty-eight thousand. Could you explain what kind of costs we include in that estimate? And then is it safe to assume that ASD can replace an educator more cost efficiently than some of our rural districts in Alaska?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start and ask Amanda and Lucy to jump in as well. So that's a number that I pulled from our annual in-review report that Talent Management produces. And, um, it's not specifically defined there, all the math that went into that. But we know that there are marketing costs, there are, you know, costs to, um, platforms like Handshake. Uh, to maintain the staff that we do in, in talent management. The professional development, the onboarding, the orientation, the induction liaisons. You know, my guess is a lot of those costs were factored into that. If you look nationally, they'll, most places will report that the average cost to replace a teacher is about twenty-two thousand. Um, we know that that's more expensive in Alaska just because, you know, it's harder, uh, you know, we have to provide things like relocation assistance. To attract, uh, talent in certain areas. And, you know, to the last part of your questions, I, I don't know specifically, but it's highly likely that that's even more prohibitive for, you know, districts in rural Alaska. And I'll pause there and see if Amanda or Lucy have anything to add to that.
Madam President, just a quick follow-up?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I appreciate the response. Um, the Alaska Legislature's Senate Finance Committee held a bill, uh, hearing for SB eighty-eight today. And they talked about how, um, the pension plan proposal isn't as much of a recruitment tool, um, for Alaska. As much as a retention tool, um, because every other state but Alaska has the pension program already. So, and we're not going to bring folks up just for that reason, they've already got it. So I'm really fascinated by the opportunity cost. When we lose three hundred educators, you know, last year, that's, we're talking ten million dollars that isn't being put towards the classroom. It's being put to try to find someone to put in the classroom. Um, so, yeah, I appreciate them. Thank you.
Questions, member Lessons?
I, uh, appreciate the previous question, but it, it struck me that, um. The cost of, um, replacing a teacher, I mean, in many ways we could think of it as significantly larger. Because we have costs for substitute teachers that are covering those vacancies. We have costs for the comment, the combo classes. Um, I mean, that's, there's a cost of, you know, the teacher who's covering. A, a multi-grade split is working harder and maybe the kids are getting less content-specific material. Maybe there's a cost in the decreased number of electives. Maybe there's a cost in, you know, special education, um, or related services sort of, you know, capacity to support is decreased. I mean, if there's one thing I've learned, uh, from my time sitting up here and talking with folks, that everything in ASD has a cost. And at the end of the day, teacher turnover negatively impacts our students most of all. And so, um, I would challenge you to pin a, what, a, a more comprehensive number. I mean, I believe that there's a cost of maintaining, you know, platforms, but, um, you know, really the cost is, is. Felt by our students. Um, I guess it's really a reflection worth in a comment. Um, I was however, wondering, and this is going back to, um, gosh, it feels like last summer. Or maybe early this fall, when we had, uh, some folks from Iser in the Finance Committee. And they had done some work saying something to the effect of, you know, ASD needs to increase its teacher salary to be competitive. With the MAPSU significantly. But there are also maybe differences in teacher retention rates in with, you know, across our schools. Our schools are very, we have so many of them, they're different entities. So I guess I would at some point be really interested in a follow-up conversation or just more information. You know, what is, what does teacher turnover look like, um, at different divisions? What does teacher turnover in ASD look like? You know, uh, at our alternative and charter schools versus neighborhood schools versus however you want to parse it out. But I, I kind of suspect that turnover may be most acute at our title schools. And, um, you know, so I appreciate that the substitute incentive is there. Um, I just wonder if we need to be more aggressive, um, to have more of an equity approach to staffing those schools. And that, like, I guess maybe one of the related thought bubbles was, uh, do we know where the teachers with emergency certificates? And maybe the J1 visas are, um, you know, where are they staffing? Is that sort of spread out across the district or are they in clusters? I mean, I remember a conversation with a principal at a title school a year, year and a half ago. And she said something like she'd had a hundred interviews and for a job at her school over the summer and nobody, nobody accepted. I just, I know that the problem is acute and at the end of the day, it's our students that are feeling it. So I really appreciate that, this report, um, and just eager to hear more as we move forward. So thank you all.
Yeah, thank you. So a couple of questions came up. The one that, for me, the one that member Jacobs asked about the, you know, what really, what kind of, what kind of cost are we looking at in replacing a teacher? And then the, uh, the, uh, the whole turnover, that's going to be kind of tricky because teachers get to choose where they go. Uh, there are, um, so how, how does that work? If we hire a new teacher. And we hire them to go to, for the first year, they can go where we need to have them, right? And then after that year, they get to choose where they go contractually. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah, they have one allowable voluntary transfer that they can put in for each year.
So we can't necessarily make somebody stay at a type of school.
No, but we can incentivize that. And that's, that's something that we haven't historically explored, you know, we, we have, as Lucy highlighted. Um, added some incentives for people staying in our hard-to-fill special ed positions. Because that is really the area that we've had the, the most difficult time filling with, or even finding any candidates to interview. So we've incentivized that and we, we could look at targeted incentives in other ways as well.
Okay, thank you. Uh, did I see a hand over here? Yes, member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Um. Got a lot of questions, but I, and I also heard member Lessons comment, which I agree with, which we should keep the conversation going. Which leads me to kind of a more, uh, meta or thirty thousand foot question, which is, this is great. And something the board is clearly passionate about, something we need to be passionate about as a state and community. What's the best format for the board to continue to stay dialed in? What's the best format for the board to continue to stay dialed in um and up to date and kind of a a part of the conversation? And um do we need to look at more regular um work sessions about this topic or a committee structure? Um has administration considered how to continue to make this a priority? Um I I heard it's well-received that a significant number of items on our educators' wish list are financial. But even if we're starting at number eleven, we, there's work we can do. Um any thoughts on that would be helpful?
Yeah, I I would certainly love the opportunity um to come and brief the board more frequently on this topic and and other aspects of it. One thing that was on the the last slide is that that came out in our talent management audit that we had performed last year is that we probably at some point need to adopt a new human resource information system. Um and the reason why I bring that up is right now we don't really have a robust one. We have a constellation of individual programs that don't talk well to each other. And so a lot of these questions that have come up that are data-related, it's very challenging for us sometimes to respond to because we have to go back and hand-tabulate this stuff. And I would love going forward for us to have a system that was much more responsive in terms of having that information at our fingertips. So we know we can track some of that mobility across schools and across districts. And um, you know, just a lot of the things that have come up in your comments. Um I would love to have a system that that could do that. The other thing that I think is um really important for us to look at, we we currently do exit survey data with teachers. Uh it's it's voluntary. Um they can choose to um share the reason they're leaving with us or not. They can add narrative comments as well, which gives us some in insight into why people choose to leave. Um but in many ways, you know, that's an autopsy, you know, that they've already made that decision to leave. And so uh one of the things that we explored pre-pandemic but pretty quickly abandoned that I'd like to see us get back to, and this came up in the talent management audit last year as well, and is kind of highlighted as a best practice in the TRR report and a lot of other um things that I've read, is a a stay survey where we're sort of routinely surveying um not just our teachers but our staff in general about uh what are the issues that are in the forefront of their mind? You know, why are they choosing to stay or why are they maybe considering not staying? And so that we maybe would have a good feedback loop that would allow us to present to the board some of the, you know, um workplace challenges that we're seeing um that are leading to some of these retention issues. We know some of it's a labor force issue, right? It's not um completely dissatisfaction. But um where that dissatisfaction exists, how can we address that and be more responsive to it? So that's kind of a uh a a multi-pronged response. I don't know if actually hits the specific question you asked, but a couple of thoughts that came to mind.
More prongs, the better. I would, yeah, I appreciate it. Um quick follow-up, if I might, Madam President. Yeah, thank you. Um I appreciate the information. Super helpful. I'm thinking through and I might, I might have an offline conversation with Madam President about, you know, maybe teacher recruitment and retention, and I think educated recruitment and retention more broadly has um potential places in each of our current existing committee structures. And so maybe opening up a space for administrations, if there's a financial component, um allowing a space for an update or one of the guard rails, um some communication aspects. So, yeah, I'll I'll think offline, but I appreciate it again. Thank you.
And I do need, thank you, Member Jacobs, but I do want to admit, I did, this should have happened earlier, at least part of it. Uh I skipped over that part on the agenda about two meetings ago, and that was my fault. So we're a little bit late getting it, but absolutely, we can have more conversation. Member Donnelly, do you have your hand up? I see your mic's on. So, okay, thank you. Uh one one of the um in this, in the last uh AEA contract that we just, the year, the year one, the year contract, there was a task force. How do we see that working and when will that start? Yes, I think it was recruitment and retention, correct?
It wasn't. It was something that we did have a conversation around in an executive session. But the um letter of agreement that we signed with AEA was more narrowly tailored. They were interested in a specific conversation around non-instructional duties and the impact that, especially in our elementary schools, of of those on teachers. And so that committee is currently up and running um this semester. Uh Eric Visti, our elementary senior director, um has a group of teachers and principals, and they're kind of working through that issue, um exploring what the issues are and looking at kind of best practices for how to manage that in buildings. So that's what came out of that conversation. Um I have talked with Member Jacobs um as well about, you know, we we had had talked in that room about the possibility of a task force around this topic. And um that is certainly something Dr. Brian and I have talked that we would be open to. Um I would like to maybe see us move towards that stay survey first so that we have some really good data to operate from. Um that extends the timeline a little bit, but um that that is one of the thoughts that are kind of kicking around in the back of our mind too in terms of how to keep this um in, you know, in the conversation.
Uh so uh my question has, that my next question has to do with I I we track, we track our employees by gender and ethnicity. Do we, other than teachers and principals, do we track by the job that they do?
Uh yes, um there there are a number of different, we have uh more more than a few uh different types of unions, as you know. So we do track across all the different unions. I mean, track across um substitutes um and temporary workers. So, yeah, there is, um there are various metrics that we um use to, sorry, we do try across different various metrics.
Okay, all right. And I guess uh my last question is, when we have conversation, and it might be for, I don't know if it's for Marty or in this group or for somebody on this side, when we um have conversations with principals, do we talk to them about the composition of their staff? Just, you know, their hiring trends? Have we done it at all? Or is that something we do? Or do we just, it just lends, I mean, it's just up to the principals who they hire? And then do we train principals in 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 hiring practices?
So there isn't anything specific that we do when principals interview their applicants? They just, you know, they go out of the the pool of applicants that they have in their job opening and they make a selection based on um the right fit for their building. So um at this time, we don't offer any specific trainings around around that.
So would, so principals are, they don't get any training on how to use hiring practices?
As far as looking at the makeup of
Not not who they, they can choose who they want, but the process of hiring, you know, how do you, you know, how do, how do you structure your questions? I think you do. I think you have a handbook, right?
We do. We have a ha- hiring manual, but as far as specific trainings around looking at the demographics of their building or anything like that, we don't do. But there is a hiring man- manual that suggests and gives examples of certain questions to ask their their interviewees, um best practices to use same questions and all of those things and how it's formed. So, yeah.
Yeah, and and I think that handbook, if it could be made available to the board, because it really is some good stuff in there. Um but but I I I I'll just hold my other questions, because if we don't talk about, if we don't.
Can I do a follow-up?
Sure. Thank you.
That is something that's some uh something that Peggy and I have discussed and that we're talking about particularly around interviewing and understanding the nuances of different cultures. Um that's really relevant to Alaska when it comes to interviewing, what that looks like. So that is a training and something that we have identified that we really need and something that her and I are working on developing.
Okay, thank you. Because it's not that we want to tell principals who to hire, they get to hire. But there is a conversation to be had about, you know, how do we go about finding that good fit? I mean, you know, there are legal pieces, and then there are also cultural pieces that I think we need to be aware of. So with that, oh, we are five minutes over our time. So I want to thank you guys. Great report. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And we will make more time to have these conversations. Um it may mean that we will start an hour earlier, but we will make more time. We'll find more time. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so now.
Madam President, I move to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of legal updates, negotiations, and contracts. Sir?
Moved in second to adjourn to executive session. Is there any opposition? Seeing and hearing none? Oh, we are moving into executive session. All right, thank you.
Recording stopped.